Call the work session to order. Dean Baugh.
So I guess, I'm not sure where you want to go today. So I was going to start off with kind of saying how we got where we're at on the collection process. 2012, we made our first change to the process, which went from three months to two months. And we went down for about a year. In April of 2013, we had a council work session where the council had a lot of input into how the process was working. So between April of 13 to the council meeting of October 9 in 13, I think I showed we had like three or four work sessions in there for getting input. On October 9th, we passed the current process we're using right now has been in place since that October 9th meeting, went into effect with the December 16, 13 billing. So we've been on this process since December, December 13. If you can look down, unfortunately, the way they, we did penalties here, and I didn't know this until we started going through all this process, penalties were rolled into the utility fee, so they were kind of all jumbled together. So that's why, I could only go back a certain time, in December 2012, we broke it out and created a separate line of penalties so we could track them. Which was a good time, so from, because 2012 is when we made our first change of the process. Then in 2013, you can kind of see, 2012, before we made the change, penalties were about $113,000. I had six months worth, you double it, it's 113. The next two years, it was about 113. And then all of a sudden, in fiscal year 15, we saw a decrease. And then, for this year, we're looking at seeing a decrease in the way penalties are coming in. So it seems like the collection process we're doing has reduced the fees and kind of starting to bring our receivables down. So I think that was the main goal of the council, was to get fees reduced and get that. So that's kind of what we've done. Because I know before the 2013, sorry for the way I say this, but we wanted to get the penalties off the little old lady who, oops, I missed my, I missed it by one day, she got a penalty. We wanted the penalties on the people who really need the penalties, those who are just not paying their bills for a couple of months and all that. And so that's where we're at now. You know, there's pretty much a grace period, we don't do as many penalties, and it's going down. So, from there, there was a couple of council members who sent in some questions. I don't know if you, if you just want me to go over those questions real quick, or where do you want to go from here? It's kind of your work session.
Well, I was, hello. I was one of the, I was the one that brought this up. I had received a lot of, I wouldn't say complaints, but concerns, just about different parts of the process. And it, they may all be separate, but they all kind of revolve around the utilities and the water system. So basically, what I have heard about are issues with deposits. Issues with deposits in regards to condominium owners, or owners, specifically the Oak Grove condominiums where there is an HOA. And someone was describing that, that liens were being placed against, potentially against the HOA, and they were, they were thinking, how do we deal with this? And then also, the refund process of, so explain to me how the deposit process works, and how they get that deposit back and when?
Okay. So, and this was kind of the same, same question Wayne had on deposits, right? So, so, first of all, our whole deposit thing is set up in our fee schedule. We spell it out real good in the fee schedule. If you come in and you're a homeowner, you bought the property, you can either do a $20 credit check, and we're not looking at your credit score, we're looking at payment history. So if you have late payments on more than one account, then we come back and you owe deposit. If you have 10 payments on one account that are late, I still say you're fined, because I figure you were fighting with that one person. You know, that happens a lot. But if it's more than one account, then we can go back for a penalty. So you can either choose that, or you can just pay a $200 deposit. If you're a homeowner, after 12 months of good payments, that's refunded. And it used to be, you had to ask for that, I think it was a couple of years ago, we set up, no, that's automatic. The staff reviews it, and they kind of see if they can track when the people hit that date, and they refund them automatically.
How is that refunded?
Either it can go on the account, or it's, usually, if they're a current customer, it just gets applied to their account.
So if I get my refund, I would, let's say July was my 12 months, on my next statement, my August statement, the $200 would be applied to my water bill?
Would go on your account, yeah. And then you would have to pay your bill for it.
I'd have a zero bill for August, and then?
Yeah, whatever your bill is, it would use that.
Okay.
That's the normal way, just so, we just kind of, it's just, and they flip it over.
Is it reflected on the bill that it's a credit?
Yeah. It'll show a big negative on there, I don't know if it says deposit refund, I'm not sure what it says on the bill.
Okay.
But it'll show you a big credit on your bill. You know, do not pay this. Now, if you're a renter, it's a different process, and this came about by, basically, landlords, because a lot of renters were walking off and not paying their bills. So a renter, their deposit is $200, and it's there until you move out. Because you could be there one year or 10 years, doesn't matter, at the end, that's to pay your final bill. Same as if you're the landlord, when you move in, when you move in, your landlord takes first month's rent, last month's rent, and you don't see that till the day you move out. Because they want to make sure you pay your last bill. Same thing we do with renters, because basically, they don't have any dog in the fight. If they walk away, no skin off their back, they just walk away. And we, we had a problem with that in the past. You know, now with the larger deposit we have, it pretty much, it's, it does a lot better job of covering that final bill. So we're not having as many bad debts out there on that. Now, for both homeowner and renter, if you have a bad account, like if you're moving from one place to another, and we go, you know, you're a bad customer, you had a delinquent account in the past, you're a bad customer, then the deposit moves up to $300. So, and that's for both homeowner or renter. If you've got, if you've got a bad, you know, a bad, bad history.
So the purpose of the deposit is just to protect the city from that person jumping ship?
Correct.
So, why do we have a lien process as well, then?
Because sometimes the deposit doesn't cover it, it's, you know, the only thing that the lien is, is if there's anything left over. So, you know, liens are a lot smaller now, just because we have, our deposit's bigger. But still, when you've got some people, I'm not saying all, but we have some that, hey, I'm moving out in two months, they don't pay their bill, by the time they're shut out, they got two months' bill and they're gone.
Right.
That's just the life of...
That's a renter.
That's some scrupulous renters, yeah.
Right.
I'm not saying all, but...
I can see that for a renter, but when you're selling a house...
When it's a homeowner, no. Homeowners, we have the lien on the property, and when the new person comes, if there's something out there, it's cleared up.
So...
And it's cleared up by the person who's moving out, so they pay the lien as they move out. So basically, they paid their final bill. We had a big meeting with the real estate agents, because there was an issue of, they'd call us, we'd say, here's what's in the account now, there's not a final bill yet, because we can't get it till the guy moves out, and we take a final reading. And so all of a sudden, they're moved out, they're gone, new person's in, and all of a sudden, the guy who left doesn't pay his final bill. Now there's a lien on the property. And then they, the person who moves in goes back to the lien company, or the title company, says, wait a minute, you were supposed to find this. And so then they have to pay it.
So if the person that moves in, if there's a delinquent bill, and the house exchanges, or the keys are exchanged, the new person comes in, and they go to hook up their water, is there the possibility of them being told, no, we won't connect you, because there's still an outstanding balance?
No. Usually, at that time, the, any old thing, you know, the normal bills are paid off. What happens is, is once they close on the house, title companies called and said, what is this? And we tell them, this is the bill right now, we can't give you a final until we take a final read. And if the guy moves out today, and the new guy moves in tomorrow, we don't get the final read till that final day. Then we have to generate a bill. And if that person who moved out says, I'm not paying it, and they walk away, then yes, there's a lien on the property then, from that. And usually, what happens is they go back to the title company, the title company pays it, because it was a lien, it was a purchase, and that made title companies real mad. So we met with them, and we came up with a plan, and now some of them don't like this, even though it was their idea. When they call us and say, somebody's moving out, we want to do a title search, here's the bill now, and here, and we asked, we have a form, we send it back. Here's their normal bill, and then we add a percentage to it, so here's what you should keep at closing. And then after closing, if it's too much, we send a deposit. And so now they're all griping that we're holding too much at closing. It was their plan. I mean, I think Gary was sitting in on the meeting. This is what they wanted, and now they're griping about that, because we're trying to give them an estimate to cover that final bill that we can't get till the guy moves out. So we're trying to cover that, but now the title companies are complaining.
Well, in full disclosure, it's been 10, 11 years since I've been through the home buying process, but this all seems very, and I don't even remember this, when I sold my house and moved into my new house, I don't remember any of this process. But it, it just seems very convoluted and very cloudy. I don't know, is this how other cities operate, or?
It's, it's, I mean, when you buy a house...
How everyone does it?
That's why you have title insurance. Their job is to go out and figure out what's out there. And utilities are one of them. They check with all the utility companies. If you go back in 10 years ago and check your title report, I think you'll find on there, whatever's, you know, different thing, you know, all the, if a utility has a lien on there, they'll find these things.
The one, the angry complaint I had, this summer, where there was a cash deal on purchase, and that new owner wound up believing on that property.
Because they didn't do a title search. And to do a title search, as a cash person, they can also go out to this conduits program, and they can, they can get a title search off to see if there's any money owed. So yeah, on a cash deal, I can't help you, because you didn't do your due diligence. You didn't check with, I mean, there could have been a mechanic's lien against it, they wouldn't have known. He still wants his, you know, lien, he's paid, so they didn't, they must not have done their due diligence to see what was out there.
And I don't want to pay for that.
Yeah. Okay, well then, that's, it's like, it's like if you don't do an inspection of the property when you do it, and all of a sudden you move in, there's a hole in the roof. Oops, well, you should have done your inspection. Your fault. So, you know, I can't help you on that, but most people get a title search, and it finds all this stuff. Because we, we deal with title companies all the time on these things.
Can we go back and talk about the rental situation a little bit? And maybe you answered this, and I didn't quite understand the conversation that you and Jason were having. If a tenant moves out, and they, they are in their rears, they don't pay their bill, and their deposit...
Doesn't cover it.
And/or their deposit doesn't cover that, is there any negotiation to go back with the renter's deposit with, with the realtor, or with the landlord?
With the homeowner? Yes. Because...
So that they could, the city could get, could notify the landlord what their rearage is, and then that could be deducted from their deposit before, because I think the landlord has, I don't know, 60 days, 90 days, something like that?
To the back, yep.
To get their deposit back to the tenant.
We tell landlords all the time, we've told all the property management companies, when you've got somebody moving out, call us, we'll give you the bill. Because yeah, you can hold it out of their final, if their deposit here is not going to cover it, it can come out of their other one. The problem is, a lot of times, if they're in arrears with us, they've destroyed the house, they haven't paid their rent, so the lien, the deposit they've got's not going to cover what's there anyway. And so, does that, but we do tell them, call us, we will tell you what the bill is, so you can make sure it's covered before they leave, before you pay their deposits back. Because they do have a certain amount of time, and we've told as many as we can, as they come in, we've told, like I said, we've told all the management companies, and as many landlords as we see them, to do this. I will tell you, there's not many that do it. So it's out there, it's a tool for them, they don't take it out of their toolbox, basically, and use it.
I have another question about the credit check. So, I sell my house, or I move into town, I buy my first house in Lebanon. I come down to City Hall, I gotta do a credit check, and put a deposit down, is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, one or the other.
Oh, one or the other.
Yeah, you do a credit check, if it comes back good, we waive the deposit. Comes back bad, we still need it. Some people choose not to do a credit check, and just go right for the deposit.
Say I do the credit check, and I give you my 20 bucks, and away we go. I sell my house, I move into a different house here in town.
Correct.
So I disconnect my service, now I need to restart service. Do I do another credit check? Or have to?
We, we haven't been doing, if you've got bad history in the other place, yes.
No, I don't.
But if you've got, if you're a good history, a lot of times, they'll ask me, and we'll just waive it.
I got one laid, or I got a whatever, you know, I haven't missed a payment, I haven't shut off.
Usually, Julie or somebody will ask me, and then I'll just, I'll waive the deposit.
So that's something that has to go through, individually has to go through you?
We have to, because, because I don't want the staff to have to, have to do the responsibility of doing something.
But the policy would be then, that every person has to have a credit check, even though I'm an existing customer, and all I'm doing is changing my address?
If you're just changing your address, and you're a homeowner...
I'm changing my, my location of my service, I guess.
If you're a homeowner, and you're just moving, then the deposit can be waived, if you've got good history. If you're a renter, it's different. If you're a renter, and you're moving from this rental to that rental, that deposit stays with that one until that final bill is paid.
Well, we're talking about credit checks, not deposits.
Okay.
So...
No, you're not, I...
But I guess with a rental, there is a deposit no matter what, correct?
It's a deposit, there's no credit checks over there.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, they, if they've got good history, then they can get it waived.
And so is that something that has to be looked at on a case-by-case basis? Does that have to be, when I come in and say, I need to move my service over to Oak Street from Ash Street?
Julie would look at your history, and if it's good, she just, she'd just say something to me, or at the time, Sarah, and me just say, yep, waive it.
Okay.
And that's all there is.
Okay.
But we do look at everyone?
If you're moving services, yeah, we look at your current one, because we want to be able to tell you, because we have to go in there anyway and put down what's your forwarding address, so that new bill will come to your new address. So we have to go into the old account, and they look at it and say, yep, I don't see any bad, and then we can, it can be done. Now, like I said, on a renter, it's different. We hold, if you move from one place to another place, then for a short period of time, you might have two deposits with the city. Because we hold the one at the old place until you, that final bill is cleared out. And then, we transfer the funds to your new, to your new account. I will say that...
So then I'd have $400 in deposits sitting out there?
Yes.
So I'd have a $400 credit on my account, more or less? Or a $200 credit?
Well, you have a 200, and then we'd bring the 200 over. No, well, once it pays off your final bill. So it depends, if you pay your bill in cash, yep, $200 would transfer over. If you don't pay, and it comes out of your deposit, whatever's left comes over.
So does he have to bring that up to the $200 level?
At the new one, yes. The new one would have to have a $200 deposit, same as the old one. And then, and it covers.
So if only 150 rolls over, he's got to come up with $50?
No, no, he has to pay the deposit on the new one, before service starts. So we would actually have $400 of his in deposits till this account closed. And then, then, so he'd have a deposit over here, when this one closes, and the final bill, whatever's left over, rolls over on his account against his other, his new account. Not his deposit, his new account. And we do that, again, that was at the request of a lot of landlords, because sometimes we'd clear this account out, guy'd move over, and then we're in a fight shutting off water at the new house, because he doesn't pay the old house, and so we just, we do it this way, it gets really weird. I will tell you, since we hired Kathleen in July, it used to be, we did finals once a month. So yeah, people had a good gripe, that I don't get my deposit back for at least four to six weeks. Now, we do final bills every Thursday, checks are written on Friday. So the, so when you, if, wherever you move out, it's going to be final either that Thursday or the next Thursday, and a check or a transfer will be done the next week. So basically, it's within two weeks to get your deposit back, or 10 days. So we've really shortened that, and it's worked out really good. So that should have eliminated a lot of those issues of having two deposits, because it's cleaned out real fast.
Maybe I'm the only one who's really confused by all this, but I, and I consider myself a somewhat bright person, but I just, I think it's really confusing, and I'm not, I know it's not, I know it's our policy, not yours. I just want to make sure that what we're doing is the best possible customer service that we can do. That is, you know, it's easier from here, not more complicated from here, but I want to make sure that we're doing that. And if there's ways that we can streamline this, and make it easier, that was kind of what my hope was. If there, but if there's not a way to do that, that doesn't put the city at great, greater liability, then I don't think we need to move on it. But it's, it's confusing. And if it's confusing for me, I'm sure it's confusing for a lot of other people. And so that's why we get the calls, and we get the emails. And we don't always get the full story, I understand that. Everyone tells us that their credit is, or that their, their payments are on time, and everyone tells us that they never miss one. And then, you know, sometimes you go look it up, and oh, wait a minute. I understand that, but we still, I still feel like I have an obligation to...
Yep.
...ask these questions, and try to sniff out a better way. And maybe we don't do that today, but anyway.
I think the thing we have in place now, it's working, like you can see, the penalties are going down. And I think the folks, you know, we can kind of see a trend in our lockoffs. There's a number here, and you know, it's small, it's large, it's small, it's large. You can kind of see people are going in these cycles, and they're in two different cycles. And it's the same people getting locked off, because they just, that's the way they do their finances, I guess. But it's, this month it'll be 80, this month it'll be 100, this month it's 80, this it's 100. It's, it's really predictable.
Could you go over that lockout procedure again, just so that's on public record, and everyone can hear that, that watches, and...
Let me...
I have a question around that, as I did at council meeting, too. Go ahead, answer his one.
Okay. So I kind of brought the form here, and we, if this is off our website, and we had all this councils. So, the way it works, and it's been working out really good, bills have been getting, with our, with our guys reading the meters, that's been working really smooth. We get bills out here, it's sent off well before the end of the month. So bills are in the mail before the end of the month. So, and the bill you receive at the end of the month is due the 15th of the next month.
And that's for, so if we're talking January?
Yeah.
So January 25th, they're going to mail out bills for the month of January?
January 25th, we'll mail out bills that go from December 18th to January 18th.
Okay.
And those get mailed out the end of January.
Okay.
Those are due in February.
So our billing cycle is mid-month to mid-month?
Yeah, 18th to 18th.
More or less?
And I don't know why they picked those.
Just to confuse everybody.
It's something from, maybe it's back when the other meter reader, that's the only day they could do it, or something, I don't. So, so, it's due the 15th. Then, we'll just follow this one bill through, then, so you don't pay that, I think it's like five days later, then we send out delinquent notes. So we give another grace period after that, and then we send out the delinquent notices.
Comes in the mail?
Not anymore. You guys didn't want that. No.
Yeah.
We, we don't send out a notice, everybody, landlords get a notice.
So on January 20th, if it's a renter, the landlord gets a letter?
Landlord got a notice saying that the bills due, right.
What does the customer get?
Per the council policy, on their next bill, there's a note saying, you're delinquent, in big red letters, off to the left.
So end of February?
They get a note saying, you're delinquent. And, and there's, so there's no door hanger, there's no, all those, that all went away, like $25 in fees, went away. So, then, let me think, I'm going to, so we can follow this through. So then, that bill's due the 15th. So by the time that bill's due on the 15th, we've done lockoffs around the 10th of the month. And, and that's the lockoff of the one that was due on the 15th of the last month, which was the bill that was due for the month before.
So they'll be locked out?
So at that point, you're two months behind.
February 10th, they'll be locked out?
Yeah, pretty close to that.
But with a due bill, saying it's not due until the 15th?
They get the, well...
That I've heard some, is that right?
They, they get a bill that says, you're delinquent, to avoid being locked off on this day, you need to pay by this day. Your current bill's due on this time, but your past due is due on this time. It's in big red letters.
There's two separate due dates, then?
Two, two different things there. You have your current bill's due on the 15th, but to avoid lockoff on the one you didn't pay from last month, it says, you better pay by this date, or you're getting locked off.
So Dean, let me ask you, so, for December 18th to January 18th, they get a bill on the 25th, right?
Right.
That's due on the 15th of February?
Right.
Okay, so they don't pay that?
No, 15, no, I'm sorry, you're right.
15th of February, you're right.
They don't pay that, then they get a, five days later, they get an, or it shows up on their next bill?
Right.
On the 25th of February?
Then there's, then there's penalties, penalties come five days later.
Okay.
And the penalties is the $5 plus 2% of the outstanding...
I get bogged down on that.
Yep.
So, they're going to get locked off on March 10th.
February 10th.
So a bill that was due...
The bill got out in January?
Right.
Was due February?
March 10th.
And that was due, yeah, March.
So for water used between December 18th, January 18th, it's locked off on March 10th?
Around, around the 10th of March, yeah.
That's your timeframe, council.
And, and at that time, you know, we're, we're starting to go out and read the new meters, so you've already got another month of usage in there. That's why we, that's what we say those two months due, because there's already another month that they haven't been billed for. That's, that's getting to come out.
So in the payer's mind, they're only behind one month?
Right.
But in reality, and that's because they don't grasp the billing cycle and the usage cycle?
Because they're saying, I got billed on the 15th, I didn't pay it on the 15th, I'm getting shut off one month later. Yeah, but when you get shut off, that's for a thing that was from two months ago.
Okay.
How many complaints have you had about the confusion around that issue?
Why don't you ask us that question?
Just the ones that goes, just the one that goes to Jason.
Is that the number one concern?
It's a, it's a lot. I mean, I've, I've had quite a few, 10, since I've been on council.
Yeah.
People just don't understand, and they, they, they don't think that they're, because, you know...
They're that late.
That they're that late. And I think it's because they don't realize that, well, that ended on January 18th, you know, you got the bill the 25th, it was due the 15th of February, so to them, that bill, you know, that bill is right on time. It's a little late, but it's not that far late. And then all of a sudden, bang, the 10th rolls around to March, and before they have a chance to get to that next billing cycle, boom, they're shut off. So they're, in effect, they're two months behind, and it's, it's easy to understand that there, and that's why I wanted to have this, because the next email I get, I can go back and say, if you're getting, if you got shut off today, on the 10th of March, it's because you didn't pay your bill for the water you used back in December and January.
Right.
So Dean, you, you asked me to look at something, so I was looking at some different policies around the state for different municipalities. And I was also here when we did, when we had the discussions and the debate about the, the door hangers and all that kind of stuff. One of the things that I noticed from other cities is that some of them have moved to basically robo-calls, apparently a very cheap way, but it would be like, it would kind of be like the door hanger, that last ditch effort before you get turned off, "We're going to send you a robo, robo-call."
Looking at that, it's called IBR.
Yeah, and I've, I've seen a lot of, I mean, because I know the, I know the door hangers, you know, Jason would go out there on his free days and, and hand those out. But, and I understood the cost of that and everything, but I was just curious as to the robo-calls, whether that's something that we were thinking about looking at, at least to give, you know, kind of that, hey, last notice here before we actually turn off your water.
Yes. Sarah and I were looking into that, so with her gone, it's kind of put us on hold a little bit, because we're, I'm kind of buried. But we are looking, we, we looked at it two years ago, and it was going to cost us like $15,000 to set it up. But it's come so far now, there's companies now that'll, they'll set it up for free. And these are good, and tie it into our software. They make their money because it's like a credit card, you pay by transaction. So the more times you use it, it's kind of, people call and pay their bill over it. Because not only would you do that, it would be like those, you want to pay your bill? Push one, and it's done over the phone. Kind of one of those things. So that's how they make their money now, is the per-transaction fee, the more they can get, the better. But part of that is that we have outgoing calls also, which means we have to try to get phone numbers. Unfortunately, we have phone numbers on accounts, and we'll try to call somebody and the phone numbers don't work anymore. So I don't know if they just give us bad phone numbers or whatever, but sometimes they don't work.
What you calling me? Yeah, I get it.
So, so we are looking into that, that type of plan. I've got all the stuff on my desk to, to look at it. So.
I have a question about the, the renter deposit issue. If I'm not mistaken, and I, and I could be, there are no other utilities that, that hold deposits for, perpetually, for renters that I'm aware of?
I, I wouldn't say that, because I had Julie call, whoops, I've got it here. Julie called every city in the area, like, oh, and I can't find my list she gave me. All this junk. But she called Sweet Home Brownsville, um, there was like eight cities. Every one of them does a deposit, deposits are returned when you close your account. Every one of them put liens on the property, the same as we do. It's like, it was amazing, it's like she called us.
Talking about for water?
Yeah.
What about for like gas and electricity and?
Yeah.
What do they do?
I, I don't know, we don't have those. I'm not responsible for them.
And you do use electricity though. But I mean, I get what Floyd's saying, is that?
Right.
If we're doing this, and are, are we the anomaly in the system?
I haven't rented in a long time, but, you know, it used to be, you'd get a year in and they go, "Hey, you're good," and they sent your deposit back or applied it to your account, and power, gas, et cetera. At least that's the way it was back when I rented, which has been a long time ago. But, and I'm just curious, if we're different, why?
And they have the same issues, right? You can sit there and burn a lot of gas or use a lot of power and then move out and leave it. What do they do?
Yeah, it just seems odd to me that you've got hard-working, a lot of renters are, are families that are just barely making it month to month and working hard and not making a lot of money, and, and you tie up their money at no interest for 20 years, just seems punitive is the word I think of, but, and I'm not quite sure that that makes sense to me, but, especially if no other utility's doing it. I, I'd have to ask, well then, why do they feel comfortable that it's? It's one thing if you point to the guy that's stiffing everybody he can for everything he does, but there are a lot of good, hard-working, honest people.
You'd see that on his credit check.
But renters, we don't get, we don't get, we don't do credit checks. But, so let me, let me put it this way to you. All these hard-working, I had them run a number today, because we're, we're getting ready to post our new bill. So, so this should be what's, we have liens on as of today that are outstanding and have not been paid. And it's $560,000. That, there's a good chance we'll never collect it, because these people are gone. The only way we collect it is that if they come back into town and Julie goes, "Oh, I recognize your name, hold on, you owe me 600 bucks over here." Because we used to use a collection agency, and I can tell you, in two years, they collected nothing. And we paid them a fee because we collected it, and then we had to pay them their fee because the thing was at the collection agency.
But we would attach the, uh, put a lien on the property, we would, we would, we wouldn't lose the money, it would just be...
These are the liens on the property. We have 560,000 liens out today, and she's getting ready to post a new bill. So those are bills, those are liens from past bills that have not been paid.
But how many of those are renters? How many of those are renters?
I don't know. Probably most of it, because most houses, if they've been sold, they're cleared up, it's sell, I mean, they're sold. So most of this, I'll, I mean, I can't, I'd say 80% are probably from, from renters. The other 20 is probably from a house that has stuff in it, somebody died, nobody's living there now for some reason, that the house is vacant. But on most houses, if you sell the house, these liens are cleared up at closing.
Well, I, I guess I'd push it a little further, just, just to be logical. I'm a rent, I'm a homeowner and I rent a house, and I, and I have a rental.
Yeah.
And right now, I, I, I just got a report back from the title company, because I'm selling it. And oddly enough, I had a lien and I'm going, "What?" And the city said I had a, a water bill. I go, "I paid my bill, well, I do it every month, I guess." So, okay, fine. So, but if that would have been a $300 water bill, I'm the owner of the house, if there's $560,000, those are homeowners not paying it, because the owner of that home should clear that bill, if that's the cost of his business investment. So it's, I would take it a little step further and say, every bit of that money was a homeowner not paying.
Okay, it's somebody, somebody who owns it, but they're using the property as a rental. It, it's a business.
So why are we, why are we, and this might be a dumb question, but why are we giving special privileges to landlords when, if a landlord doesn't want to get stuck with a utility bill? If I'm a landlord and I don't want to get stuck with a utility bill, then I'll just increase your deposit by $300, and if you don't pay, then I take that money out of your safety deposit and, or your security deposit, and I, I use that to cover the utility that, that didn't get paid. Why are, why is this? So, but why is the city doing the job, to me, it sounds like we're doing their job?
Because we're the one losing the money. Because we don't require...
No, we're not.
No, we are. Because we don't require, if, um...
The bill goes to the landlord.
No, the bill goes to the, the, the bill goes to the renter.
And if the renter doesn't pay, then the landlord takes the money that he withholds from the renter and pays it.
But the problem is, if the renter doesn't play, play, pre, if he doesn't pay, all we do is put a lien on the property. We do not require the landlord to pay that lien. So that's where this $560,000, these are liens that have been put on properties that nobody's paying.
What am I missing here?
And to be, to be clear, we don't foreclose on the liens.
And we don't foreclose on them.
The only time we get paid is if their property transfers, and then to get clear title to the new owner, they have to clear up those liens. So there could be liens out there that are 25, 30 years old, because that property hasn't transferred. So that's when he's saying 560,000, that's money we hope to see at some point, because those properties may transfer at some point, but it's money that we haven't collected yet. Because we don't, and I don't know of any city that actually forecloses on properties just because of unpaid water bills.
But Floyd's point is, you know, let's move it up the river a little bit and go to the landlord and get them in the game.
Right, because the $200...
They're opening the door, aren't they?
The $200 obviously to protect us, or we wouldn't have $560,000 outstanding.
Dean? Okay. Thank you for opening the door. Because I, I have a plan that does exactly what you're, what you're saying and will solve probably most of your problems. And I would like to, and step number one is, I'd like to move it back to where the landowner is the only one who can sign up for service. So you as a, you as a renter, I would never see you again, because your landlord has that. And, and we have a lot of landlords that already do this, they already paid the bill, pass it on through their rents. So that's, let me pull out my, my step. I told Gary I was going to hold this back and...
Dean, why did you make me wait so, or work so hard to get this out of you? That's what I want to know.
Yeah.
Why?
Wait, where's my note?
You know I have my blood pressure.
I typed this all up, let me, let me find my note. Shoot, I can't find my note. Okay, I'll add lib. So we want to make it the property owner's responsibility, then, so, or the landlord. We would treat them like any other property owner. If they have clean, um, clean bill, they get their deposit back, just like anybody who owns a private piece of property. So eventually, hopefully, we wouldn't have any deposits on our books, because we all got them back.
What's wrong with that?
Nothing. If, if we're getting our money, I am happy. These guys are happy, because they can go out there and dig up your street and fix things. Without money, they, they sit around and do nothing.
You hear that, Jason?
Sorry.
You ready for my question yet?
But we, we would do that.
The note's just out there.
But I want to throw the carrot out on top of this too, because if, the only way right now that we collect liens is if you come back in and do something. So what we're looking at is a carrot for these landlords, is we want to say, any liens that are greater than five years old, we're going to work on writing off. Just, they're going to go away. If, if you're going to take over the bill in the future, we'll clean up the past. And that kind of cleans up our books, we don't have all this bad debt out there, we'll never collect. It'll take a few years, because of the way audits are, I don't want to break the water and sewer fund by all of a sudden writing off a half a million dollars. But, but anything in the last five years, I think they should have to pay, because there's been enough discussion about this topic in the last five years. They should know that these liens are out there, they know what's going on. So those ones, we would ask them to pay. Anything past that, we would say, "We'll get rid of, once we switch to this new plan." And then, and that will take care of your deposit situation when a renter moves from place to place. A lot of these issues would go away.
So am I hearing you right, that what would happen in the future under this plan would be that the landlords would, would pay all the water utilities and sewer for their, their renters, and they would just roll that charge into the rent?
Into their monthly, whatever.
That would be, however they choose to do it.
And we have a lot that do that, you know, like there's a lot of apartment buildings when it's one meter for the building, it's, that's the way it's done. There's, and then a lot of duplexes, they have one meter, it's one bill for both, they do it. So we already have a lot of this already.
If you want to do this, do it with your eyes wide open, because my experience is, I tried to do this in Whitefish, Montana, and the council got barraged by landowners who didn't like it. And they were successful in getting the council not to do it. They wanted the city to manage their renters' accounts, and that's essentially what we're doing here. Now, in, in Ketchum, it was this way when I got there, and it worked beautiful. We didn't, we didn't have near the complaints and the issues over our utility billing in Ketchum that we have here. It was very similar in Whitefish, because it was, again, we were, we were the, often the bad guys on the front line when a renter had a delinquency. If you go to this other system, the issue's between the renter and the landlord, not between the renter and the city. But if you want to do this, politically, you're, there's a chance that you will, you will experience pushback from the landlord community.
Oh, yeah.
So just be aware of that.
If we were to move that policy, I, I think we would, it'd be appropriate to have some public discussions about that.
Oh, yeah.
You'll have public discussions whether you want them or not, they'll come to you. That's what I'm saying.
No, but I wouldn't want to just move this onto the agenda and, 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 you know, pass it in the next 30 or 60 days without giving some notice and actually having a hearing.
Absolutely. And I'm only telling you this because I want you to have your eyes wide open.
Absolutely.
I think it's a good way to go, but not everyone will agree.
Right. I've had this exact discussion with a landowner not too long ago. The exact same discussion, and he was not happy with, I can't remember exactly what the policy was, but he was just not happy and said that he didn't want to continue to have rentals in Lebanon. So I could see that, that will be an issue that we'll need to listen to from their point. But I, it's a, I like the plan.
So, so I, I talked to our auditors and our software company and said, "Do they know of anybody who does this currently?" And they both said, "Yeah." The auditor says, "Yes, that they've, they've had a, a number," and she goes, for the life of she couldn't think, but she goes, "Yeah, I audit them and they, they do this." The software company said, "Yeah, there's other organ companies that do it." She said, "As a matter of fact, every one of their, there's the people who use this software in the state of Washington, that's the way Washington does it. They don't, renters don't sign up." And that's the whole, whole state, she said. It's the way it's set up. So this is not an unusual way of doing business, but it's going to be a change of the way thinking that people are doing business here. I would foresee us, because of this, there'll be plenty of newspaper articles, but I foresee sending out letters to all the landowners and, you know, rent, renter folks and giving them notice, you know, there'll probably be some work sessions or whatever. Well, we'll have to go through this, it'll take a while, because there'll also be a big, major code change. Because the way our code is written, we'll have to switch that, there's some stuff in there we'll have to go through and switch.
What kind of timeline do you see for this?
I, I would say at least six months to kind of get through this. Meetings, writing the code, getting things approved. And then after that, it's going to take a while getting renters off and property owners on. Because they'll have to close their accounts, zero them out, do this, move it to the landlords. That, it's, it's a big process.
And if we do that, be prepared, you'll probably get complaints from people because of transition issues too. That will probably, well, undoubtedly, that will come. But if you get on the other side, it'll work much better.
Well, that's similar to what happened when we changed our reading policies and our reading system, that was...
Yes, exactly. Never again should we have a private company read our meters, because we just don't know what they're doing.
Yeah. Jason's guys are doing a great job at that, let me tell you.
Is there any reason to, to schedule it for a particular time of year, like July 1 with the new year, or January 1, or just whatever long it takes and then become...
I wish I had, I wish I could find my note that I wrote, because I wrote a whole note on this. That's something else we'd like to put into this whole plan. Man, I just can't find my proposal. Here it is. I knew it was in here. So let me make sure. So another thing we'd like to throw on top of this to help folks is, we, there's two other switches we'd like to make, kind of along with this. Because a lot of people in this town don't understand sewer averaging. They don't get it. So we'd like to go to, you use a gallon of water, you get charged for a gallon of sewer. You know, I've, I've asked these guys to rent some numbers to see if we're going to lose, lose money, whatever, because of the way it works. So we'd like to just go tie it together. That solves your issue of, every year we get complaints from snowbirds, "I was gone on vacation for two months, I still had to pay my $100 water bill." Well, no, if you're gone for two months, you don't use any water, you just pay your meter charges. That's where, so it solves those. And the other thing we'd like to look at in the same process here is to offer the budget billing. So this would help your landlords, instead of having a $300 this month, you pay 100 bucks a month, whatever it is, and once a year, it's changed based on previous year usage.
Same thing the gas company does.
Same as the gas company, our company. So, so like you'd pick out, instead of doing sewer averaging changes once a month or whatever, or once a year, you'd pick a, a month and say, "That's the month we're going to adjust based on last year's usage," and your bill either goes up or down depending on what you did. We did this in Alaska when I was up there, and you're going to have people who are going to say, "But I want a water outside." And if I go to one gallon of water, one gallon of sewer, then they're paying for sewer on everything they put outside. There's a number of ways you can fix that. They can either put in irrigation meters, which we would read and subtract from their sewer, or you can put in, we actually had meters on, they'd come in in the spring, we'd sign them out a meter, take a reading, it's hooked onto their outside spigot, they bring it back in the fall, and we subtract it from their, their thing here. That way they don't pay for water that goes into washing their car, water in their garden, because grass is brown enough, we want, don't want anything to go worse. So there's ways to look at this, but it's things we'll have to talk about to go through this. So those are a couple of things we want to kind of add on to this process, to do it all at one time. And I think your landlords would like it, because then they're not getting a $300 bill this month, 200 that month, 300, it's that much. So that way they can set their rent at 1,200 bucks, and it's there. Next year, they, they adjust their rent based on what's in there.
Would we be better to just explain the sewage process instead of having to recreate a new, I mean, because I, I get that argument, that was the first thing I thought, I was, well, every, every drop I put into my outside stuff is going to be paying sewer on. Would we be better off to maybe just?
We, we can leave it this way.
On how we calculate the sewer and.
I was just trying, we could leave it that, that's fine. We're just trying to, a lot of people just do not understand. And we spend a lot of time trying to explain to people, especially once a year when it changes.
Well, I just think of throwing in extra meter readings and that just becomes, just seems more complicated.
This is, don't get stuck on that.
Now, now we have the potential to screw up two meter readings for them instead of just one, so.
There's other ways.
These guys don't screw up meter readings. They're good.
There's other ways to do it.
Yeah, there's other ways.
You can look at your, your average reading over like the winter months.
That's what we do now.
And then you can subtract that from their summer usage. And it's not precise, but it's very close. And you can account for generally what they use for irrigation. Because, you know, most people in December aren't irrigating their, their lawns.
If they are, they.
The, the use, are they? The usage that's going out of the spigot is also going down the sewer one way or the other. So there's, those are, there are ways to do it without extra meters.
Yeah. Yeah, don't get stuck on that right now. There, there's a lot to talk about if we want to go down this path. And we'd bring out a lot of ideas to you guys as we go through this.
So can you go back and, and answer the question with respect to the timing? So if, if we were to propose these changes, when, when would be the appropriate time to try to establish a timeframe to make that as a part of the process? Would, would you be shooting to bring it online with the new fiscal year, July 1? Or would you shoot for January of 17? Or does it make any difference in, in if it took until August or September, then let it be?
The timing of bringing it on, I don't think would affect us in the billing at all. Timing wise, I think it's going to take, I'm going to say it's going to take six months before we get everything through council and ready to implement the plan. And then after that, it could take another six months to get all the landlords flipped over. So it, it could take a year before we're on the other side of this.
Dean, I, I think the question is, is there an optimum time of the year that would be easier for us to make the change than some other?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay. And I think Wayne, Wayne, do you still have a question?
Yes.
He's waiting patiently.
Well, I'll go back to my January council meeting that I brought up the shut off on holidays. Do you recall that?
Holidays?
I know we don't have a leniency policy, but we, I got two calls these past Thanksgiving and Christmas because we locked somebody out Thanksgiving Eve, Christmas Eve, or there about a day or two.
Yeah, we don't lock anybody off on Christmas or, matter of fact, usually we don't, we don't do lock offs on Fridays because we're not going to have you off on the weekend. And, you know, if you get locked off on Wednesday, you go through the weekend. That's not my problem. But we, we won't, won't do a lock off on a Friday. We won't do a lock off before the holiday. I think a couple of years ago, there, there was one, I want to say one small shony apartment building that got locked off like on Tuesday and he refused to pay the bill till after Thanksgiving. He came in the morning of Thanksgiving, paid the bill and it was turned back on. That's the only one I really know that was shut off that I, I really know about.
Well, the shut offs would happen generally around the 10th of the month too.
Yeah. And like I said, but, but we make adjustments, you know, if there's a holiday there, things move. If the 10th of the month is on a Friday, you know, we don't, we, it's moved away from that. Usually our, I think our shut offs are usually like on Wednesday is when we try to do them, in the middle of the week. So you've got a couple of days there to do something.
Well, this one did happen on a Wednesday because Thanksgiving was on Thursday.
Thursday. But see, and I, I, I would take it with a grain of salt because we would not shut somebody off the day before Thanksgiving. And I'm not saying they're lying. Maybe something happened. There was something other, other extenuating circumstances. But usually, like I said, we don't do, even if there's a reason we're going to lock you off and it's a Friday, we'll say, nope, we'll do it on Monday. We go past the weekend. And we don't want to be through the weekend. So I, I would think unless there was some real extenuating circumstance that they got, that it was shut up on Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Would that notice have gone out in their bill?
Yes, when lock offs are, yes. And, and, but like I said, we, we, we don't do lock offs on a Friday. We don't do them the day before a holiday. For, for two reasons. Selfishly, because we don't want them without water. And I don't want to call Jason's guys back in on the holiday and pay them quadruple time or something for holiday pay to come back and turn the water back on. So we just wouldn't do it.
I'm saying the leniency that comes with you. I mean, Julie or Sarah is going to come to you and say, do we want to?
Yeah, we set the dates when we're going to do it and, and they know, they'll come and ask me, hey, this falls on this, can we move it? Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, we're going to move it. We're not going to do this on a, on a Friday or whatever. Or like I said, if, if somebody's got a bad check, we've sent them a door hanger and they don't want to, and they don't come back in, you know, and 48 hours is Friday, we'll say, no, no, we're going to do, we set, we set the date for Monday because we don't do things on Friday either.
Okay. Well, I just know that it, it happened twice in the past 12 months.
I'd love to know who it was so I go back and look and see what it was because.
I came in and talked to you about the one, but anyway.
I don't remember.
When it comes to staff making that decision, you're the one that makes the decision.
It was me or it was Sarah when she was here. And wherever, whoever the new person is, when they're up to speed, they'll be able to make that decision.
Both these individuals were chronic abusers.
But, but the regular monthly things are always done at the beginning of the month, 10th.
Around the 10th, yeah. If the 10th is a Friday, then it, it could be either Wednesday. You know, we try to do, we try to do our normal monthly lock offs on a Wednesday.
Right.
So however that falls.
Back in the past, we used to do the door hanger.
Yep.
That would come out after the five day, so like the, if it's doing the 15th, when the 20th rolled around, that's when we'd go put a door hanger on there.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, but we said, let's get away from that because it was taking up staff time.
Took up staff time and they, we charged a $15 fee and they didn't, now we want to get away from the fee.
I guess is there a better way to, other than the one bill that comes and, you know, and.
I think the robo call is the way to do it.
Yeah?
I get, I've gotten.
You get the call and?
Other utilities.
Email? Are we emailing at all? Do we have email?
I don't think so.
Capability or no?
We don't.
Realizing that's not going to work in all situations.
Yeah.
Because numbers are not going to be fail safe.
Yeah, we have, we have, it would take a while to get our num, our phone numbers up right if people want to give them to us. Because there's a lot of times like they'll read a meter and it's like, oh shoot, this person's got a leak. So we try to call them, numbers don't work anymore. I don't know why. They've, they've gotten rid of their landline, they've changed cell phones, whatever. A lot of numbers we have don't work.
And it does open a whole other problem, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, looking at these numbers, we've made pretty good improvement.
I was surprised when I looked at it, how it's, it, it kind of studied out. It took a couple of years, but it looks like it's kind of, there's some dropping.
You know, I, I guess personally, I would say let's don't make drastic changes and let's see how this flushes out after the rest of this year.
It's flushing out the way it's going to flush out, but I guess the, the other thing is that the reason we went away from the two month notice was that now, if it's a chronic non payer, now we're into what?
April.
April?
It's going to be April.
Because they didn't pay starting in January and if, or starting for, for December's use. And if they also didn't pay for January's use, you know, now we're, we're three to four months worth of bill delinquent and that's.
That's the reason we made the first change back in 2012 was to get it down from three months outstanding to two months outstanding. Try to flip it. So, because once they get to three months outstanding, a lot of people just can't get out of the hole.
That's a big hole, yeah.
It takes a lot.
At 150 bucks a month or 200 bucks a month.
They would be shut off now.
Yeah, they'd be shut off and they're off for a while because even if we, they go to, you know, obviously go to Fish and Salvation Army, all those, they can't get enough money to pay a three month bill. It takes a while to get caught up then.
We're going to need to wrap up. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thanks for the info, Dean.
Just real quick, so is the council interested, interested in us trying to kind of flush this plan out a little bit and bring it back to you?
Sounds good.
Just to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We'll adjourn the work session and reconvene in a few minutes for the council meeting.